They're like, they're like, sorry, we're broke, sorry, we're broke, sorry, we're broke. And I'm like, yeah. Now I know for next time.
But the thing. Oh, it's five fifteen. Or maybe five seventeen, I see two different times. Or it's May fifteenth, maybe that's it. Right, comprehensive plan visioning workshop, who's in charge of this?
Well, good evening, council. Steven New and Chwaner with the community development department. I don't really have a whole lot to say tonight, other than really to introduce our consultants again for you that are online, so they're joining us virtually today. But we've completed the community survey and done a lot of outreach. And so the consultants tonight will present the results of the survey that we did, as well as begin the discussion with you on the visioning statement for the comprehensive plan. So with that, I think we'll turn it over to, I think, Bob Bangford and Scott Banjukian from Makers. And Jesse Hartman from Burke is also here, as well as Michelle Ellsworth.
This is Jesse, I'll just say a quick two cents, since I am the overall PM for the project and reintroduce myself again. Sorry, I can't be there in person tonight, I do love to be in Wenatchee, but this is mostly going to be run by Scott and Bob, and I'm here to kind of answer general questions about how things fit into the kind of overall comp plan process if needed, and jump in if there's any kind of nuanced questions, but I will hand it over to them and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Jesse. Good evening, council and others attending, thanks Stephen for the introduction. Again, I'm Scott Banjukian, with Makers, we're helping out with some of the community engagement and the visioning process for the comprehensive plan. And just wanted to start by sharing some results of the community by visioning survey that ran early this year. So I'll go ahead and go into that, we've got about twenty-ish question summaries to go over. Won't take too long, but we can go back and answer any questions about those, and then Bob will also be talking about some of the visioning questions and some of the draft vision statements for Wenatchee that we've started, and by no means this is the end of the process, this is definitely the beginning. And, but we hope that the community input to dates can help influence and kind of share with some of the community preferences and directions that would not only help with the vision statement, but also filter through the rest of the comprehensive plan update and all of its chapters. So the survey was primarily online, and this is the focus of our first part of our presentation here. It was open for nine weeks, it was city staff were responsible for distributing it, and they did a great job. Over six hundred valid entries recorded, and we also had a Spanish version, which was very much worth doing, because we got about a little more than a dozen entries in the Spanish language, which was helpful as well. And I think as part of the reason we got the good response rate was we offered a gift card incentive with Visa gift cards, and we wrapped off six winners for that. In addition to that, city staff also did a two-question paper survey that they shopped around with community members and with some partnered outreach, and we'll have a summary of that mixed in here as well. Just wanted to point out briefly, you might have heard about this, we did have a large number of automated internet bots or AI responses, probably because of the financial incentive to complete the survey, it's pretty common to see this type of thing happen. So working with Burke, we were able to filter out the majority of those that were very suspicious, either because they have a strange email address or other flags such as completing the survey at 2:00 AM or strange phone numbers and whatnots. So the end result was six hundred fifty valid entries, five hundred eleven invalid entries, and we have some lessons learned and hopefully takeaways that the city can use for this and other projects going forward about advertising and making sure the surveys designed to more easily catch those types of answers. Wanted to also just briefly go over the survey participants' self-reported demographics, all demographic questions along with most of the other survey questions were entirely optional. But just based on survey participants' self-reporting and comparing the Wenatchee population that we know from federal data and census data, survey participants tend to be higher income, older, and less racially diverse than the general Wenatchee population at large. And so this just emphasizes the need as the comp plan update goes forward, our team and the city staff need to continue working on trying to get the opinions of lower income, younger, and people of color, to make sure their views and opinions are well reflected in the comprehensive plan. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Bob, do our early visioning questions.
Thanks, Scott, good afternoon slash evening, council members. So the first question that we had here, what do you love about Wenatchee? And what struck to me, looking at the percentages of the answers, two big clear winners here are obvious. Access to public parks, mountains, water for recreation, and the beautiful setting that you have. Some other, the other, another fifty percenter, number three, the vibe and small-town feel, strong sense of community. And rounding out the top five are walkable, bikeable community at forty-three percent, and the community feels safe to live in thirty-seven percent, and you can see the other listings that came below that, next slide. What are you most concerned about? Number one was the homelessness and associated community impacts, sixty-seven percent answered that. The next couple relate to cost, lack of affordable housing, or lack of housing supply, cost of living related to that. The others fall under fifty percent, but rounding up the top five are crime and public safety was a concern at forty-two percent. And public health issues like aging, mental health, and addiction at forty percent, next slide. The paper survey had, the staff put together, had some open-ended open-ended questions or answers, and we asked what issues are top priority for you and your community, and you could see this is just kind of a summary that Scott prepared of some of the answers, things like more diversity in the types of affordability of housing, more transparency, collaboration with government, traffic safety, reckless driving, and I won't read the rest, but you could see the bullets there. Let's go to the next slide. And then what do you hope happens over the next twenty years in Wenatchee? Number one, again homelessness becomes infrequent and brief event, sixty-one percent. And then a bunch packed around fifty-one or fifty-two percent, including public lands are preserved and easily accessible, including the shoreline and foothill trails. And then the community thrives in a safe and crime-free environment, and also fifty-one percent sufficient supply of housing, supply and variety of housing, let's say, to make living here affordable for everyone. And then rounding out the top five hopes, downtown is a thriving place for locals and tourists, and that was tied with a diversified economy with living wage jobs and supportive educational system. Next slide. So the paper survey question number two, consider what you love about Wenatchee, and then what you would like to see changed, now complete this sentence. In the next twenty years, I want Wenatchee to be, and then, so this is just a summary of the types of answers to that question, along, kind of along the same themes. A more safe and peaceful city with less crime, a place with more youth, family activities, support for schools, a more affordable place, a place with more job training, more businesses. And again, you could see the other bullets there, but let's go on to the next one. And then we did the word cloud, and we asked, imagine Wenatchee twenty years from now, and what three words would you use to describe Wenatchee in 2046? And so you could see the answers here, and which words came up more often than not, safe was, came up more often, but you could see, again, affordable, beautiful. But the other notable ones, you could see there, diverse, thriving, sustainable, community, inclusive, clean, were the other big ones that came out. And let's go to the next slide. And then the city is considering options for the title of the comp plan, and we had folks select up to three that they liked the most, and these were the three winners. Wenatchee Forward, honoring the past, building the future, Wenatchee Together, vibrant, thriving, sustainable, and planning today for Wenatchee's tomorrow, and then you could see the four, five, and six. I think Scott's going to take back over here for the next several slides.
Thanks, Bob. So I'll go through more of the, some of the quantitative questions that were broken out to several themes and end pages of the survey. So this first one was a pin map where people could point out where they live in the city or elsewhere, we had a little box saying if they lived outside the city, but so perhaps people who worked in town but commuted in, still were answering the survey, they could fill in that area in the lower left there. So you can see pretty good coverage all around the city, some responses from people living in East Wenatchee, and most of the neighborhoods are represented, not a lot of responses in the more mixed use and downtown and waterfront districts. This question asked based on the city's character areas, which, as you may be aware, that the city has broken Wenatchee into these seven character areas to apply different types of zoning and design standards, and so we thought that was a good theme to continue using and asking, and also make it a bit of an educational process to let people know that these different character areas exist. And so we asked where people live, where they work, where they do shopping and recreation, or patronize entertainment venues, and also where they don't visit, and so the results here are about what you'd expect. The people mostly live in residential areas, they work in commercial areas, and they some of the, most people don't visit some of the peripheral areas around town, such as the industrial district. Also at the character areas, we asked what types of activities or services respondents would like to see more of in these areas, and there was no limit to the amount of choices that could be selected. So you can see here just kind of the breakdown by the different areas people are interested in, and we marked in blue here answers that were selected by more than forty percent of respondents, which I was maybe a rough threshold for something to consider. Overall, you see transportation options comes up a lot in the residential and commercial areas, along with shopping and eating options and recreation and entertainment options. We asked respondents to think about the quality of their neighborhoods where they live, and the design features, and other civic amenities that are available to them. Overall, people are generally satisfied with the features of their neighborhood, the top three are all over sixty percent positive. And that is for parks and recreation access, the scale of buildings, and the accessibility of the transit service. At the lower satisfaction end, nothing achieved a majority dissatisfaction, but the notable ones here are dissatisfaction of being able to walk stores and cafes, and the quality of the walking experience, including sidewalk quality and street trees and landscaping. This is one option of several questions where we could filter responses by those different districts to see if there's any major differences between neighborhoods. We also then pivoted to more of a policy question, asking people about affordable housing, which we suspected and was confirmed in the survey results Bob presented, that it continues to be a major concern of the Wenatchee community, so working with staff, we put together kind of a grab bag of approaches that Wenatchee has been considering, or has been implemented by other communities in this part of the state. And you can see, overall, people are open to a variety of approaches, however, only two items broke fifty percent overall, with strong interest in allowing taller and larger residential buildings in commercial districts, and expanding or funding infrastructure to help support low-income and moderate-income housing developments. And government incentives, like a multifamily tax exemption program, also for low-income and moderate-income housing projects. This was also a question just on the slide here, where we find it would be interesting to break out the results, not, in this case, not geographically, but by people who self-report being homeowners and renters, which can sometimes reflect strong differences of opinion, or can also be interesting to see where there are, there is alignment. In this case, for example, renters are more interested than homeowners in regulating vacation rentals, and they're more open to funding strategies like a citywide property tax levy to fund subsidized housing. And renters have a slightly higher openness to taller buildings than just in commercial areas. In that same vein, we worked with city staff to ask about supportive housing, and we did explain what that is, and said, say, it might be a new concept to a lot of readers, and it's also a new topic under state law that Wenatchee needs to address more specifically. Supportive housing is a broad term for several types of housing and shelter to help people with complex health problems and transition out of homelessness. And it generally is very difficult to create, it's often operated by nonprofit agencies, but it has a good track record of reducing homelessness. So we asked, since Wenatchee has to now adopt this land use into its development regulations, are there any special supplemental regulations that should come with it? And so you can see the options we asked here about operations and location, and the size of these developments. So the biggest one, the one that came in over fifty percent, was operations requiring an operational plan that deals with security and the behavioral requirements for residents, and that generally aligns with best practices anyway to include something like that, and then you can see the list goes down from there. Then pivoting more to infrastructure and economy, we included a question here about the Confluence Parkway project, because it's a major investment planned by the city, and we're interested in seeing if there's any spin-off benefits that could be explored. You can see here, people have a strong interest in leveraging this transportation project to also improve transportation for walking and biking in the area, and coming a little bit over fifty percent was also an interest in promoting mixed-use developments. Perhaps alongside or after the construction of the Parkway project is complete. The other items did not seem to make it past fifty percent, so there's a little bit more lepromitance than the others. We also had a lot of other responses as well, that we can provide separately in writing. We asked a very broad question about the future of Wenatchee, and not expecting survey takers to be economic experts, but trying to get a finger on the pulse of where they think the community is headed, and perhaps this can also reflect what's jobs and industries that the survey takers work in. So we see here that overall, participants think Wenatchee's economic prosperity and job options are most closely tied to natural resources, healthcare, education, and tourism, and so this will have some implications for the city's economic development strategy going forward, and what types of land uses and housing to plan for. One notable difference, just looking at the Spanish entries, again, we only had about sixteen entries in Spanish, tourism, personal services, retail, and restaurants ranked higher compared to the English results. This was one of the few very open-ended questions we asked. We asked, what types of businesses or services do you feel are lacking in Wenatchee, or that are here today and should expand? And one way to think of that is access to any services that you need to leave Wenatchee to get to. So we had a lot of specific businesses and service ideas mentioned, the full report can be viewed for detail. Trader Joe's was mentioned over forty times, but to summarize some of the other broader categories, healthcare access with a lack of specialists and pediatric care and mental health being notable. A lot of support for more diverse retail, restaurant, and grocery options. More childcare and youth services, which is very broad, because there were some calls for childcare, preschool, after-school, and activities or facilities for older kids and teenagers that have activities to do. And then also connected to the public lands and recreation theme that Bob was mentioning, there's a lot of interest in more access to the outdoors, but also a celebration of Wenatchee's culture and arts and culture and entertainment programs and centers. Next, we have the pretty broad and open-ended question about technology, and so asking what transit technology Wenatchee should stay on top of to prepare its government services, economy, and people for the future. And perhaps in the context of this being a government-created survey, the biggest trend was desire for the city to focus on making its public services, such as permitting meetings and information sharing or available online. And from the outside, it seems like Wenatchee has done a pretty good start of that. Following that, or dealing with cybersecurity threats, expanding public Wi-Fi, and expanding electric vehicle charging. And you can see the list kind of goes down there. We had another broad question about the environment, asking how important various resources are. People highly value all of the resources we asked about, and clean water is important above all else, but also strong support for the scenery, agricultural assets, mountain and water recreation, and wildlife habitats. We asked a few questions about transportation, since that's so linked to land use and forms a lot of the planned investments and policy focus of the comprehensive plan. You could see that driving alone is very common today, and also very popular for accommodating that mode in the future, for obvious reasons. This is one area where we also looked at the differences with the Spanish entries, so in comparison, people who answered in Spanish that they were less likely to frequently drive at seventy-two percent today, compared to ninety-five percent overall for all survey takers. And they're more likely to bike and take transit than the overall survey takers. We asked what would need to change in Wenatchee's transportation system for people to use their preferred modes? Nothing beats the fifty percent threshold, but the three that came closest all relate to better pedestrian and bike infrastructure. And another component of that would be more commercial services like grocery stores in close proximity to where people live. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob to go into our draft vision statements and looking forward to the conversation. Actually, and I think we'll keep going, and then we can pause again for questions after Bob gets through, because I think a lot of the answers to questions are going to kind of relate to the rationale for the vision statements that we have drafted.
Good idea, Scott. Okay, vision statement, so we took a stab at this based on all the data that we got in, and Scott collected, and it's something that we've been working on for a number of communities lately, Scott's gotten pretty good at it. But let you be the judge in how you all wanted to find, refine these example statements that I'll dive into, but first, want to kind of explain vision goals and policies a little bit. So the vision statement is a collective agreement of shared desires for the future of a community, it's the compass that points the way to a common direction and values of a community. Way we could explain it, whereas goals are statements of desired outcomes or intended achievements, and then, of course, policies. Specific statements guiding actions imply a commitment by the city to those actions. They provide a framework for future decision-making from the city and authorize regulations or other actions to implement the policies. They may express intent or describe another action to be taken, for instance. Next slide. And so Scott put together some examples here from some other cities in the region, and East Wenatchee, Shalan, and Moses Lake provide a good kind of brackets for the different types of statements. East Wenatchee is super long, and kind of talks more about the whole valley, at least at the very beginning, it's always interesting to see where they start with these, and, you know, how many sentences do they include? You know, we usually try to go for something quite a bit shorter. But I'm not going to read it out, and that would take a long time. Shalan's is a little bit shorter. Offers a spectacular natural setting, small-town charm, recreational amenities, and friendly people. And I'll let you kind of look at, if you can possibly read that. Moses Lake is a bit shorter, in fact, I can probably just read the whole thing here. A diverse, connected, and supportive community of innovation and opportunity that values its namesake lake, small-town vibe, growing arts and cultural scene, a bunch of sunshine, outdoor activities. So you could kind of see, try to, each of these cities tried to get a statement that has that kind of feel, get feel right for where the city wanted to go in the next twenty years, and be a little bit aspirational. Let's go to the next slide. So with that, Scott produced three alternatives, I went over them, we refined them a bit after talking about them. I'll say the first, and then I want to kind of explain some issues with issues and challenges and approaches, but let me read the first one here. Wenatchee is the economic and cultural heart of the scenic Wenatchee Valley, and celebrates its small-town feel and multicultural community. The city is a safe and affordable place to live and do business, and it hosts a variety of educational and economic opportunities to support a strong and diverse economy. Public services and infrastructure are resilient and well-maintained. Okay, so with that, I wanted to say, you know, after I finished the third one, it'd be good to get any comments, see if there's any preferences. And you don't have to pick one, you know, the obvious is the kind of mix and match, or we might, I wouldn't expect to come up with a statement here tonight, but you never know with councils, and but maybe at least some preferences, you know, elements you don't want, and elements that look really good, any of that would be helpful. But what I will say is, we tried to integrate the terms and the adjectives that hit that, hit those high points in the community preferences, while trying to interject a little bit of zing and enthusiasm into the statement while keeping it short and sweet, but one particular challenge was integrating the term "safe", which, you know, an argument you saw, it was a common theme there, and came in number one in some cases, but actually integrating that into a vision statement is tricky for obvious reasons. So in each of these, we took kind of a different approach, you could see that in the first alternative one there, that it's in the first sentence, but you'll see that it's, in the second one, it's kind of in there too, and it's not used at all in the third one, by basically by implying other things, it's sort of a goes without saying kind of a thing, that it's a safe community because of all the other things you're saying in the statement, so I just thought that it was important to kind of talk about that issue, because it's particularly challenging. So let's get on with the next two. Okay, in 2046, Wenatchee, okay, actually, I'm wrong, this is the one where we say safe in the first sentence, this alternative one, we say it right away, or in the second sentence. Okay, in 2046, Wenatchee is a safe and attractive city with a strong economy, a mix of housing options, and great access to outdoor recreation. The city provides an excellent infrastructure system, quality public services, and great streets and public spaces that meet the needs of its diverse community. Wenatchee celebrates and protects its natural resources and history while also being resilient to change and growth. Let that sink in for a minute. Okay, let's look at number three. Wenatchee is a vibrant and welcoming community in a stunning natural setting. The city is home to many services and amenities that help all socioeconomic groups and businesses thrive. Downtown and commercial districts support daily needs and a variety of shopping and entrepreneurship opportunities, and residential neighborhoods offer a mix of housing options for all stages of people's lives. So there we go. We got three alternatives, and go to the next one here, you can see them all. But I'm curious of what, what, what you all think, if you've got any preferences, things you don't like, questions, whether it's about the survey or this. Did I miss anything, Scott? Is there anything else I should ask while we're on this?
No, I think that's a lot to take in, so we can finally stop and we'll take questions. And again, either on the survey, we can go back to any of the survey questions, or we can dive into these alternatives and what you like and don't like.
I've got a survey question, and then I have some comments on this, but let me start with the survey. And that's just, what is a good response? What would you have felt like would have been good for us to have in terms of numbers?
It's a good question. It's kind of varies based on the size of the community, but I would say, I don't know if we set a goal for Wenatchee, but I kind of informally thought maybe five hundred would be good, so we definitely got past five hundred responses.
Great, and thanks for your work on this, too. Appreciate that.
Keep going.
As you guys speak, do you mind just saying your name, because we can't see you?
Oh, sure. I'm Charlie Atkinson. Yeah, Charlie Atkinson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep going on the vision statement, and I wish I had printed this out and made some notes on it, and I didn't bring them, so this is going from a little bit from memory. As strong as the natural beauty, outdoor recreation, I think I like the third one, has more of that feel to it. I like it that in the first one, it's in the first line, but just scenic is all. So that was one thing. The, I like not having "safe" in there personally, but I recognize the struggle since that shows up. But I also have this feeling that the homelessness piece and some of the safety issues that maybe people felt around that are changing, and when the survey was done, that was still a strong perception, so for whatever that's worth. But I think that takes a while to get out of one's collective mindset. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, well, in the second one, while also being resilient to change and growth, I just had, trying to understand what it means to be resilient to something, and maybe while also embracing change and growth, you know, just wordsmithing, but not a big deal. The last one, I like it more now than I did when I read it on my own, but there was something there that felt a little bit like the city was going to provide a level of service and care for people that initially struck me a little wrong, so I got to think about that one a little more. I like it better tonight when I look at it, so anyway, those are my vision statement thoughts.
I will, this is Linda Harrell. I will just say, what I didn't see, and it's a major industry in our community, is anything about tourism that it's attractive to out-of-town travelers or conventioneers or sports people. And on the second one, I didn't like the fact that it started in 2046, because Wenatchee does have some, some safety issues, but when I compare us to other communities, we are light years ahead. We have a very strong police department who does an excellent job, and I know this from working in tourism, that people come here because they feel safe. All things being equal, when you're looking at a venue and things to do in a community, safety is going to be the deciding factor, and we will come out on top every time. So I think "safe" is a good thing to have in there, but I'd also like to see something about tourism. I'm probably saying number one is probably my favorite, the one I like the best.
Good feedback, thank you.
Beg your pardon?
Good feedback.
And just a note that we are happy to wordsmith these here if you want to, if you have like very specific, we can all, you know, we can take comments after the meeting, too, if you want to sit down and kind of redline things, if that's easier, so.
Yeah, I'll just comment, too, on the mention of 2046. Some communities like to treat the vision statement as kind of like, if you're receiving a postcard twenty years in the future, here's what you want Wenatchee to look like, but also it's going to take a long time to get to 2046, so some other communities prefer to just kind of have it as more of a guiding statement, continuously going forward rather than at a set point in the future, so I see that good point there.
This is Charlie again. I want to commend you on the length of these. I think short, less is more, yeah.
I have to agree with that.
While we're, while we're there, Linda mentioned that tourism isn't there. If there's anything else that's not in any of these statements, that'd be good to know, too. It should be.
I think whatever one we end up with, Charlie, again, stunning natural setting in number three, that's, that's a great way to say it, I think.
This is Myra. In looking at three, all three of these, I think I gravitate towards your first option. When I look at your first option, I think that we're all looking for our basic needs to be met, and I actually like having safe, affordable housing in there. I think that's, we saw it was one of the top concerns for our community, and if I think we're asking our community to own this vision as much as we do, I can truly appreciate that aspect. And I do like the small-town feel. I know that that is something that we saw in the survey results, and I even saw it in a lot of the comments, like, let's stay small-town, let's not become Seattle, let's not become a large city. So it sounds like that was something that was very important to our community, but I also see the value in just that hook as soon as they read it, like Charlie mentioned, with that stunning natural setting, because I think many people who come from other states drive into East Wenatchee, and that's all I hear them say is, it's just so stunning, it's just so beautiful to come into this valley, so that is my feedback. Thank you, guys, for all the work.
I think you could very easily take that first sentence in alternative three here and kind of put it at the start of the first statement, without it being too long, you know, and then we could also add something in tourism there, but there's definitely ways to kind of take the pieces you like from, from each one.
Yeah, there you go. Take all three of these and make it.
Nah, this is top, council member top. I, I think there's a lot of good stuff, there's like, everyone has a strength, but I don't know, maybe a little more abstract would be, let's talk about how we want our town to feel, like, I'm like, I'm like a people person, so like, maybe we kind of say like how Wenatchee respects diversity or promotes, if you're talking about the vibe, we promote like a safe place in a way that's more, I don't know, for people. Like, I like, I love Wenatchee because of the people, so whether it's twenty, forty years from now, I still hope Wenatchee has this kind of sense of the community, so, yeah. I don't know if that made sense.
So there's the welcoming, and I actually, it was Shalan or one of the other cities, the people city or something like that.
Something like that, but, I mean, looking at the other stuff with the, and then you kind of broke apart the Spanish-speaking survey things and kind of what they wanted to see Wenatchee with the more cultural, you know, stuff. I don't know, I think that's kind of what makes Wenatchee great, and what will make Wenatchee great is us celebrating our cultural diversity, but, yeah.
And that's why I liked the first one. This is Myra again, and that's what I highlighted. I forgot to say that, but I would like to highlight that multi-cultural community. I think even when you drive into Wenatchee, the fact that we have a sign that says, "Welcome, bienvenidos," that already makes a world of a difference for people, regardless of where you come from. You know that they're acknowledging that there's more than one culture, race, et cetera, so.
We are very close to becoming a minority-majority city.
I'm curious why you guys struggled with, and it sounds like my colleagues are into using "safe," and I don't have a problem with that, but just curious about the, why you struggled with it? My concern is that it potentially implies that you're not safe if you are putting it down as an aspirational goal.
That's exactly why it occurred to me, yeah.
So on the "safe" thing, I think our community, for the first time, has felt unsafe for a while because of the homeless impact that we had never experienced before at the level that we did experience. And so even though some of that has subsided and we've gotten some distance from that or some control, yeah, I understand the word "safe." Travis Harvey, council member. Anything you guys come up with is going to be better than what I could come up with, Councilmember Harvey, feeling safe.
Okay, well, while others are thinking, I'm just, I think we've got some pretty good input here. Trying to look at other components of the various statements. You know, all of them, it looks like, and maybe Scott, you could chime in, we tried to work in resilience as in two of them. One says, "public services and infrastructure resilience, resilient, well-maintained," while another one is, "while also being resilient to change and growth," and we heard some comments on that. Infrastructure, public services, great streets and spaces. Any?
I'll just briefly, that, I'll turn to, it does mention infrastructure, I think most of them mention infrastructure, but two calls out great streets and public spaces, and that, that was one of the emphasis of some of the Spanish-speaking results, and just generally, there was a lot of interest in better, the traffic safety came up a lot, and interest in more connected walking and biking infrastructure, so streets kind of is a bit of a catch-all for that, kind of more nuanced issue, but that's one, that's one way that some of the multicultural feedback was integrated, along with mentions of educational and economic opportunities, like job training came up. We don't, I just, I did just realize, we don't have a big mention of families or youth activity, which was kind of another theme that came out. We do mention housing options for all stages of people's lives, but maybe there's a, maybe that could be expanded somehow.
Scott, this, sorry, this is Councilmember Navarro Gomez. I know when I filled out the survey, I have to be honest, I was one of those that filled it out like at one in the morning, because it did seem a little long, honestly, for a working-class mother, and I'm just, I just, full transparency, I wonder if maybe that's why you didn't get as many comments as far as like youth sports and more outdoor opportunities, et cetera, I don't know. I'm just throwing in, like, within your survey, just a thought. I don't know that we, I think you guys did break it down by age group, though, didn't you guys? Were you able to see by demographic information as far as what percentage of our twenty-to-thirty-year-olds versus thirty-to-forty?
Yes, yeah, we broke it down by the typical ten-year categories.
And for the, the time-of-day comment about taking the survey, so we, we didn't immediately filter people out if that was the only flag, and there was a kind of a series of, there were some dates where there were some very clear bot attacks, and we did kind of remove those, and then there were some very, very obviously not-real emails that those got removed. But for a lot of the other ones, where we have that kind of bulleted list at the beginning, we put a flag if you, if, if the response included any of those, and then we looked at the ones that had at least three flags, so.
No, that makes sense.
Just being at one-thirty in the morning wouldn't be the only reason.
No, and that has nothing to do with it. What I meant to say is, in general, I think I would have liked to see more responses saying that we need more extracurricular, an infrastructure for more extracurricular opportunities for students, children, and young adults.
Yeah, that was definitely something we heard, especially, you know, you might remember the question about lack of businesses or services, activities for, for youth and teenagers was one of those things that came up. So, yeah, I think we, something about that should be worked in here, perhaps.
Yeah, I think it's hard because like, to keep it from being like super long, you can't, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I do, now that I read number three more, this is Councilmember top, I like it, but with, but like Linda said, it may be something with, like, how we want to promote.
Visitors.
Visitors to, but, yeah, I know, I, it's hard, yeah, because these can get super long if we, if we say.
People tend not to think of Wenatchee as a destination, but we are very much a destination.
Yeah.
We have so much to offer here.
And I guess the first one, I like where it says, "it's a small-town feel and a multicultural," I, I, yeah, I think that's.
I like that, too.
Keep that piece.
Because I saw in the one-word cloud, there was, there was like things like, some words that maybe like conservative or this, but, but Wenatchee, it's kind of, it's great because it's, it's small, but it's not like, I don't know, it's progressive as well, so anyway. That's all I have.
Yeah, the other thing, number three does mention downtown.
Yeah.
And, and commercial districts and downtown. Those aren't mentioned in the other ones, so part of it is like, well, is it, yeah, is it critical to, if we like parts of one, it's clear we want, there's preference for interjecting the stunning natural setting, for instance, into the statement. But what about, you know, here we say downtown, and commercial districts support daily needs, entrepreneur, it mentions residential neighborhoods also. So are there aspects of those or angles on those that need to find their way into the vision statement, or different angles related to those? Any comments on that?
The only thing that, oh, go ahead.
Or the waterfront, too, because, you know, you, you've got a pretty, your waterfront's a lot different now than it was twenty years ago, and that's another part of. And, um, that's another part of town or neighborhood, you know?
This is Charlie and I was just, um, picking up on Linda's, uh, concern or desire to see something about visitors. And maybe, um, that it would be as simple as saying that whatever these things are that we're highlighting, that, you know, for residents and visitors alike, that it just, you know, that type of, that we get that word in there.
I just think it's important to acknowledge that. Food for thought.
And then it gets back to who's this vision statement for? Maybe that's a, a primary question. Is it more guiding for us? You know, it's not, maybe people from out of town aren't looking at this vision statement, but it, how does it guide us?
Don't, don't you think?
It certainly helps, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say it's, uh, it definitely helps the consultant team and the city staff as we're writing the conference of plan because ideally a lot of the, the goals for land use and parks and transportation, et cetera, kind of has a little bit of thematic theme, but beyond that, the city is, you know, if it's something you want to promote, you could certainly make it more public than, uh, relying on people cracking open the comp plan and take a look at it, so.
Have it prominently displayed in, in city hall.
Kind of along, it's kind of a more public facing version than your mission statements perhaps.
And I think, um, from what I'm hearing, I think you're right that Wenatchee is kind of a, a hub in central Washington especially, and it draws people in from a lot of different areas. And I, I think tourism, well, you maybe, it's kind of external, but really it does have a, a big impact on people's lives in the community as well, both in, in the economic impact and just like people coming in to visit and you want, you want your community to be attractive for those that are there and also people that have just happened to be in town for a weekend or a week or whatever it is.
This is council member Travis. Um, so here's my notes. The first sentence from alternate three. Everybody loves that. Alternate one, people really like the first sentence. Taking alternate two, using their first and second sentence. Mic drop. I don't know, I'm done.
I see what you can do with that.
Where's your chat GPT on your phone? Well, I think, um, the more I look at it and looking at that word cloud, we saw safe, beautiful, affordable, diverse, sustainable, vibrant, community, clean. And then the next level is our purple level, accessible nature. When I look at one, we don't really call out like the beauty of our natural resources and just our opportunities to thrive and explore them. But yes, I, I agree that all three have a lot of great
Yeah.
components that we could definitely put together. In the end, I think it would be helpful for Mayor Tripichin obviously, but I think it would be really nice for us to see those put together and then have our final vote. My opinion.
This is Charlie. We haven't talked about the last line of alternative two, uh, protecting natural resources.
See, that's what was missing.
And history. Uh, I'm not sure, I mean, I like history, but I'm not sure how important that is, but I think a statement that celebrates and protects its, its natural resources is pretty significant. It's a major, I mean, people move here and are, um, pretty happy about the trail system and those kinds of things. And it, I think that's important to have in there probably. I mean, there was a comment that I was struck by in the, in your comment section. Somebody said in twenty years or whenever, the foothills are going to have houses all over them. And, uh, that's not going to happen. But, yeah.
Mary, you gonna say, you say something?
This is Mike Poyer. Um, on page nine, the one comment was a place with, uh, more youth and family. And I know that's been brought up, but the statistics are, of course, we're going to grow. But for example, the one high school is going to go from twenty two hundred students to twelve hundred within nine years. So we, even though we'll grow, it, it's kind of interesting because people want this youth. I see Matt nodding there, but that's, that's, that's just the numbers that's happening. We are, we are not going to, uh, but that's throughout our whole country that we're having less population, but definitely Wenatchee is going to get hit hard through that as we see some school closures on that, so. I'm not sure how that's put into our vision statement, if that's something to put in. But I also believe with top, the, the heart, uh, I want to call it the heart of our community is the people and our downtown. What I, what I am noticing, not, not very many people are saying, yeah, we need to make sure we say public services, infrastructure. I'm not seeing, like, nobody cares about that. I mean, we care about it, but I don't know if that's being cared about in this vision as we're talking.
Yeah. You know, Charlie, you made a comment about, this is Linda, um, about you don't know if people are going to look at this vision statement. I, I think a lot of potential businesses that are coming to Wenatchee are going to be keying in on this. So.
Good food for thought. We're all trying to read your, your body language and faces, but we can't, but we can't, so we're just going off of.
It's obvious, a lot of hard work has gone into this and it's very, very well done.
Yeah, Linda made the comment of all the hard work that's being done in this and it's very well done. And I think, I think the city council also recognizes that.
Did you guys have a word count that you were aiming at? And, and my one suggest, I mean, I, and I am the one that said, you know, less is more, but uh, if you had, if you had to try to incorporate some of these things, would another sentence help or do you, do you like this size and it's a good way to go?
Another sentence would, wouldn't, uh, be the end of the world, uh, but generally, you know, paragraph-ish size. Maybe a little bit less of these.
Five, a fifth line wouldn't be the end of the world.
Yeah.
If you look at, these are all four lines.
Three sentences. I don't think that's intentional.
Yeah, these, yeah, two, three sentences, it looks like, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
But yeah, four sentence is, is workable.
So can you take all the suggestions and put something, another alternative in and then send it to Tammy, our city clerk, and we'll get it to the city council? How, how would you like, I just like to proceed on this.
Yeah, it's a good segue to the next steps, I imagine. We, but we, we, we could do that.
Yep, I, I, Jesse, are you more cued into the schedule? But I think, yeah, there's certainly over the next week or two, we can refine this and then, um, put it back in the city's court to wrap it up.
Yeah, I think we, um, want to double check. I think we'd like to have a, a decent draft that council have kind of signed off on or, or indicated a preference for. I believe that's actually one of our deliverables to commerce for the grant that's due in, the, the deliverable we do in June. And I think it's okay if it's still in draft, it, it will still be in draft form. We want to take it to the community as well and get feedback and, um, so it would be good to wrap, kind of get something back in front of you to look at in the next few weeks. Since we're already in the middle of May. The June deadlines have really snuck up. Is this something, staff, is this something that you, uh, kind of the sooner we can get it to you, you could come back to council at the next meeting?
Yeah, Glenn and I were just talking that our next meeting really would be June twelfth. We could get this uh, vision statement redrafted and then back to you and we could put it on the agenda for the June twelfth meeting. Our deliverable to the Department of Commerce is June fifteenth. So that next week, but in draft form is okay as well, like Jesse said.
So then you will get it to the city council prior to that?
Yes.
Send it out in an email?
Yes.
And then we'll see what kind of comments are back? And then hopefully then we'll adopt the vision statement. Is that what we're doing? Or you guys just need to okay on it?
I think voting on a preferred would be great or kind of a, a, it can be a council preferred vision statement. It doesn't have to be formally a, well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Does it need to be formally adopted?
Yeah, I think at this point, the preferred, uh, and then go through the rest of the comp plan process and, and, and then see, do we still like it? Do we need to tweak it? Cause you know, you're eventually going to adopt the comp plan with the vision statement in it. So having a preferred concept at this stage is, is what we strive for.
Yeah, having consensus at that meeting, but subject to being able to amend it later, be, after going through the public process, you might have some additional input and thoughts and, and you can reserve the right through that process to make additional changes and, and you should, you know, be keeping that in mind. So it'd be a consensus that, okay, we're ready to take this through the public process and, and see what happens.
Great. I think we have direction then.
So, uh, Jesse, when, um, Bob and Scott, when, when do you think you could give us a draft? Uh, as far as next step so that we can get that to the, uh, city council?
What is the packet deadline for the June twelfth meeting?
The fifth of June.
That seems very achievable, so, a little later than that's.
And I think we can probably aim for something a little sooner than that. Um.
Yeah, I don't think it'll take too long. I mean, even maybe the end of next week, um, could probably be likely.
And we, you know, the sooner we have it, the better. We'd love to get it to the, uh, city council members as soon as possible. Obviously you have your work, uh, timeframes and what have you, but as soon as we get it, we'd like to share it.
Great, yeah. And like Bob mentioned earlier, there's, you know, if the council members have any other feedback you want to provide in writing either on the, the draft statements or if questions about the survey questions and, and the results. Happy to take those as well. Uh, but otherwise, thanks very much for having us and thanks for the great conversation tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Thank you so much from staff tonight.
That sounds like a sign off queue.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Bye.
Thank you.
That concludes our business for the agenda tonight. Thank you so much.
Really nice work on it.
Yeah, that's great.
You going to that thing?
Hmm?
Yeah, I'm gonna go right now. I'm curious to see the vision statement. But I, I think if I was moving in town, I'd see it somewhere outside.
Yeah, I'd want to see it. So, um, our partners were very appreciative of you.